Good evening and welcome to the December 30th special meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. This is a reschedule of the December 15th meeting, which we couldn't hold due to the weather. So this meeting is being held both in person as well as electronically. All members of the Planning Commission, some staff and presenters are participating from the council chambers. Others are participating from their homes or offices. Before we begin, there are a few things I'd like to cover for those hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It is important to know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there will be three public hearings. Individuals who want to provide testimony remotely for a public hearing can call 1-800-374-0221 with conference ID 9037387. Individuals in the room will be invited to come forward first to speak to the commission, and then we will hear from those who have called in. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. After giving your full name and address, the green light on your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on, and when you're out of time, the red light will turn on. Staff will let anyone who calls in know when they've gone over the three minutes. Remember, you do not need to call in or comment live tonight if you've already provided your feedback. And also, please do not repeat any information already presented. Provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. Thank you in advance for your patience as we conduct this meeting in our hybrid fashion. We hope that there will not be any issues, but be assured that we'll do our best to continue the meeting as best we can if there are any glitches. So with that, we will start with our rule call. Liz?
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Barubi.
Here.
Commissioner Hayward.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Chair Ignu.
Here. Thank you. Next, we have approval of our meeting agenda.
I move to approve the meeting agenda.
A second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda has passed. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from our last Planning Commission meeting, which took place prior to Thanksgiving on November 17th. Has anyone got any changes or additions to make to that? Otherwise, I will accept a motion.
Move to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the November 17th meeting minutes passed. Next up is our community comment. During community comment, we invite residents to share relevant issues or concerns. Individuals must limit their comments to three minutes. I may limit the number of speakers of the same issue in the interest of time and topic, but I don't think that will be the case tonight. Generally speaking, items that are elsewhere on tonight's agenda may not be addressed during the community comment. And if you provide any testimony, we will not be responding on those comments tonight. Instead, we'll refer the matter to staff for consideration at a future meeting. So, any community comment tonight? All right. Next, we do move to our public hearings. So we'll start with a five-foot side yard setback variance for 6512 Aspen Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you Chair and members of the Planning Commission. 6512 Aspen Road is located on the north side of Aspen Road, just west of the intersection of Aspen and Tamarack Avenue. The existing structure is a split-level home with a two-car garage that was built in 1967. The applicant is requesting a five-foot side yard setback variance for a third-stall garage addition. The existing home currently has a two-car garage that sits roughly 16 to 18 and 1/2 feet from the side property line with a utility shed that sits currently, or adjacent to the current garage. The applicant is proposing to move the utility shed to construct the proposed garage addition. The subject property has a five-foot utility easement that runs along the side property line. The proposed garage and any overhang would not encroach into the five-foot utility easement. With the exception of the side yard setback, the proposed project would meet all of the city's other zoning requirements. As you know, certain, or Minnesota statute and Edina ordinance require that certain conditions must be met for a variance to be granted. The proposed use in this instance is allowed in the R1 single-dwelling unit district, and the proposed addition complies with the city's zoning standards with the exception of the side foot setback, side yard setback requirement. The practical difficulty is caused by the existing location of the home and the shape of the subject property. The subject property is unique in shape, and the existing placement of the home creates some issues with this proposed side yard setback on this side. The proposed addition would conform to all other zoning requirements. Granting the variance, staff believes would not alter the character of the neighborhood. The addition will match the style of the existing house and will have similar setbacks to other properties in the neighborhood and adjacent to the property. Tonight, staff's recommendation is to approve a five-foot side yard setback variance for a garage addition at 6512 Aspen Road based on the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. And with that, I can answer any questions. I believe the applicant was planning on being here, but I don't see them yet, but I can answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. Do we have any questions? Please.
So, I didn't see, you know, normally you send an email through with the Better Together comments, and I think maybe you did that for two weeks ago, but I didn't, were there any new comments?
There were not.
There are nothing?
Yep, the applicant had provided some comments from neighbors in their original submittal, but there were not any additional Better Together comments.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
Yeah, Emily, what, it's a private easement, I mean, it's a.
Utility easement.
Utility easement. Is there any utility in there?
I know the applicant was working with the engineering department, so that's why they had altered their plans slightly to make sure that not only would the footprint of the garage be within that utility easement, but any overhang would not intersect with that utility easement either.
In my understanding, it's probably five feet from, for the easement, for both the other lot too, so I mean, then it's a 10-foot overall easement?
Most likely, yes.
Okay, and, but there's no, that's important too, there's no overhang?
No overhang within that.
So even if they're operating in there, there would be, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we will go to our public hearing then. So, or wait, do we hear, oh my gosh, it's been a month. We don't have the applicant here tonight, so yes, we will go straight to the public hearing. We'll now hear from any resident who would like to provide testimony. So if you're participating remotely, call in now to 1-800-374-0221 with conference An operator will ask you for your name and street address and put you in queue to speak after you press star one. We'll first hear from any of those in the room. I don't think we have any tonight, so we will move to those on the phone if we have anyone call in.
We don't have anyone calling in right now. I did want to let you know, I believe the applicant is on the webex right now, so they are listening and they do have their microphone open if you need to ask them any questions or anything.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. I apologize for missing that. So we usually give it about a minute due to the delay, so we'll just patiently wait to see if there's any callers, and otherwise, we will close the public hearing. All right, we could probably close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing has closed. Our applicant, Andrea Butz, I'm sorry, I didn't invite you to speak earlier. Is there anything that you would like to add to this? You're not required to, but just wanted to give you the opportunity to speak if you have any additional information to add. Well, please jump in if you do think of anything, but I will now open it up to the commission. Any additional comments or thoughts? Okay, any motions?
This seems pretty straightforward, and I would be fine submitting a motion to approve the proposal for the setback as stated in the staff memo.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor of approving this variance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this variance has passed. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a 7.8 front yard setback variance for 6112 Arbor. Planner, when you're ready.
Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the subject property is located at 6112 Arbor Avenue. The request is for a 7.8-foot front yard setback variance. Subject property is a corner lot. It's approximately 13,300 square feet, an area located in the northwest corner of Arbor and Jeff Place. The property consists of a rambler with an attached two-car garage facing Arbor with a side street along Jeff Place. But in this particular situation, you have a house fronting Jeff Place, so the setback that is required along Jeff Place, or the south lot line, is dictated by the front yard setback of the house that's directly adjacent to the west, which is 5800 Jeff Place. You'll notice that there's a sport court in the rear yard, as well as some other hard surfaces, which takes up pretty much the whole backyard. This is a survey of the existing residents. The existing home is non-conforming regarding both north and south setbacks. The minimum north side yard setback required is 10 feet, and they're at 6.6 feet from the north lot line. The existing home provides a non-conforming south setback at 25.3 feet. The required setback is 33.1 feet, and again, is dictated by 5800 Jeff Place. The ordinance requires that the home match the front yard setback of that adjacent neighbor if there's any additions, or if they're going to tear down and rebuild. The proposal is to tear down and rebuild on the site. This is the existing home, front and rear elevation, and then this is the proposed residence. And it's going to be located approximately in the same area as the existing house. They will, however, increase that north setback, so it maintains the minimum 10-foot setback. And then they're hoping to maintain the 25.3-foot setback from the south lot line instead of having to match the neighbor that's directly adjacent at the 33.1 feet. The new home has been adjusted to meet all the setbacks, and it conforms with the lot coverage requirements. This is a compliance table, and it indicates it conforms with all of the ordinance's requirements. It's well within the building coverage calculation of 20.71%. This is the front elevation, which would be along Arbor, and then the two-side elevations to the north and then to the south, and the rear elevation. We have the basement, main floor, and second floor, and then the renderings with the neighbor along Arbor, and then also along Jeff Place. You can see the distance between the back wall of the new house and the sidewall of that home along Jeff Place. It's, there's quite a bit of spacing between the two. The plans were submitted for building permit, and the variance was identified at the time the contractor and homeowner were unaware of the need for a variance, so the plans have already been in place for permit. The homeowners were unaware of the need for a variance, and they received financing on the plans, have materials and a timeline set up, have moved out of the home in a rented apartment in anticipation of the new demo and construction of the home. So the plan is now on hold until the resolution of the setback. The homeowners designed the new home around the sport court with keeping it a key priority in the planning and construction of the project. The sport court was installed on the property sometime before the year 2000. I checked the aerials over the years, and it still was there in 2000, and owners purchased the home in 2016. So it wasn't as a result of actions by the homeowner, the current homeowner that the sport court was put in place, that was put in many years ago. The initial plan was to add on and remodel the existing home, however, given the foundation's condition, it made more sense, per the applicant, to tear down and rebuild on the property. The proposal maintains the non-conforming setback while not disturbing the existing sport court in the rear yard. So this shows sort of the difference between the existing plot plan and then the proposed plot plan. They're keeping the same sort of footprint as the existing home. It's actually not going to be as wide as the existing home is. It will maintain that same setback along that south side. They'll be improving that north setback, maintaining the sport court, and complying with the front yard setback along Arbor. The rebuilt home will continue the existing non-conforming front yard setback that's been in place since 1965. The new proposed home location can be considered reasonable due to the existing home's non-conforming setback. However, with removal of the existing home and sport court, it appears there is ample opportunity to comply with the setbacks on the 13,300-square-foot lot. So this is, the yellow area gives you a rough idea of the buildable area of the lot if, you know, the existing improvements, the new, the existing house and the sport court are removed. It should be noted that the current zoning ordinance does not count some hard surfaces in the building coverage maximum, including the sport court. As part of the 2020 work plan, as you know, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council have an impervious surface ratio of 50% of the lot area. The existing conditions on the property, the house, the sport court, the driveway, et cetera, are currently at 62.82% of the lot area. The proposed plan would increase that to a little over 66%. The proposed zoning amendment, including the new impervious surface requirements, was on the city council agenda for public hearing on December 21st, with the council scheduled to take action at their January 4th, 2022 meeting. It should be noted, however, because they have submitted for a building permit, this plan of the house is not under that new ordinance. It would be under our current ordinance, so it does comply, and it is well within the lot coverage requirements. The existing house was built many years ago, prior to the current ordinance's requirements. There are no variances granted for the construction of that project, so it conformed to the setbacks at the time. The new home would increase the non-conforming north setback to comply with the, and continue the non-conforming south setback as allowed in 1965 when the home was built. Ordinances have changed over time, creating a unique non-conforming situation for this particular property. They're also, unfortunately, they have to line up with the homes to the north along Arbor, as well as match the non-conform, or the setback along Jeff Place. The sport court was constructed at least 20 years ago, and not by the applicant. The pending impervious surface ordinance do not apply to this property, given that they have submitted a permit prior to that. With removal of the existing home, the lot is classified as a vacant lot, with a new home required to conform to all the zoning requirements. There are existing improvements, the sport court, that can be removed to accommodate a new home. Limiting new home placement by retaining the existing sport court can be considered a self-created circumstance, and therefore not a reasonable use for complying. However, granting the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. All of the existing conditions would remain. The new home would match the existing home's setback. All other aspects of the plan would conform, and they're improving the non-conforming situation along the north side. A case can be made for approval as well as denial of this project. The Planning Commission can consider approval of the request for a 7.8-foot south setback variance for a tear-down rebuild at 6112 Arbor Avenue based on the following findings: that the practical difficulty is caused by the location of the existing sport court that was constructed by the previous homeowner and location of the adjacent home, which establishes the required setback. The plan will conform to the north setback. The proposed new home maintains the existing non-conforming setback that's been in place since 1965, and the proposal would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The conditions would basically remain the same. However, you also have the option for denial, the request of a 7.8-foot south setback variance, given that the proposal does not meet the standards for a variance. Due to the size of the lot, the proposed home could be constructed on the property to meet the required setbacks. There is not a practical difficulty preventing construction on the proposed home. The sport court could be removed and/or relocated at a smaller scale. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Planner Ocker. Yes, Commissioner Strauss.
Thanks, Planner Ocker. Perhaps of the view, kind of a plan view showing, the site plan showing particularly the property to the west? It was one of the early. Yeah, that will work, that will work. Okay. So, I'm sure we knew this, the fact that it faces Arbor Place, and that's its front yard determination, as determined by properties immediately adjacent or up and down the block, and average, is that?
Well, they can average on the block for the south setback or match the immediate neighbor. It really doesn't help in this situation, because they're pretty much lined up.
And this is, I somewhat kind of expected you. So then with a corner house, you have two, two front yard setbacks, obviously, right? Okay, we know this. And that setback is solely determined by the placement of the house to the west?
Correct.
Not, not down the block? I mean, it's, so that one house is setting?
There are a few other homes on that side of the block, but they're all lined up, so it doesn't really help them in this particular situation.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to be that big altering, you know, the characteristic, I mean, okay, and that's clear, so.
If it's a typical side street situation, if that home to the west were not facing Jeff Place, then the minimum side street setback would be 15 feet.
Okay. These sports courts, I mean, they're, they're at grade, I mean, their surface. Does the edge of that court, does, does that have a setback too from, or is that, is that like a building?
It should have the same setback required as the house, so, and I don't know when this sport court was put in.
Yeah.
But it predates, you know, the year 2000, so it should have met the setbacks at the time, but we don't issue permits for sport courts, so they do go in places perhaps where they shouldn't.
Okay. So, it's that south setback position?
That's what is, that's what is at issue, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Planner Ocker? Please, Commissioner Miranda.
So how common are sport courts in Edina?
Pardon me?
How common are sport courts in Edina?
Very common. In fact, they've gotten very, very popular, especially, you know, this last year, when people have been home more.
Okay. So like 10%, less than 10%, more than 10%?
I.
Rough idea?
Yeah, I don't know. It's just gotten extremely popular, and we've had people that have indoor sport courts as well. I mean, that's become a really big amenity when people have been building a new home.
Okay, I'm just wondering in terms of, you know, Okay, I'm just wondering in terms of, you know, how big a problem this is in the city in terms of, you know, will this be a continuing problem? Will these come up in front of the commission, you know, more often where houses are being torn down? I guess with the new regulation, it wouldn't pass or wouldn't even, I guess that would have to be come in front of us anyway. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, with no other questions, I would definitely invite the applicants to speak if you would like to. Again, just want to apologize that we had to push this out, but glad we were able to at least move it back from the January meeting. So thank you for understanding.
Yes, thanks for making that accommodation for us and for seeing us. I'm Eric Yorgard. You know, you have most of the facts in front of you, so I'm going to give you the more human side of how we've gotten to where we are today. You know, my wife and I moved in the neighborhood actually in 2012. We, you know, my wife wanted our kids to go to the Edina schools, but weren't in a position financially to buy a house at that point at the Edina prices. So we rented a house, you can almost see it over there, on West 61st Street, 5804 West 61st, for, we signed a two-year lease, ended up staying for another year, and we got so close with the neighbors that they started telling us who was sick, who might be moving, because it's an older neighborhood. So they were looking out for houses for us to buy, and we end up with this one because that exact thing happened, and we went to the, through the estate sale and bought it before it even got on the market and got it, you know. And when we got it, it's a 1965 house that hasn't been fixed up, hasn't been touched. The sport court was an eyesore for the neighborhood. I mean, it hadn't been, it's, from talking to other people in the neighborhood, it's, they built the house in 65, and the sport court wasn't too far behind, because they were a huge tennis family, but hadn't been used in forever. So we bought it first year, we gutted the inside, I mean, we took it down to the studs. Like, we planned on, you know, just making it our home, did everything you can imagine on the inside, and then 27, that was in 2016, 2017, we did the outside. So we did a new driveway, we did, we took the sport court, and basically what they do is they, it's an old tennis court. So they take and they just level it, so they put some kind of compound on it to level it, and those, what you see there is just interlocking 12-inch by 12-inch tiles and laid it out. And in the center, there's a Edina Hornet logo, and every corner has like the Minnesota Timberwolves, the Wild, you know, every sports, Minnesota sports franchise. And once we were done with that, you know, we just wanted to live there. So we, until 2020, you know, we, the sport court has become a focal point of the neighborhood. You can see from the 16 signatures on the form that I filled out that you guys saw, all those people live in a two-block radius. I'm in a 12-person fantasy football league, and none of them live outside of that two-block area. So that tells you how close we are. The neighbor across the street, there was two neighbors that would have been here on the December 15th meeting. There are now ones in the Dominican, ones in Arizona. Their kids, you know, one is the house right behind, the one you were just asking about. Their kids are on our sport court and have free rein. They're, I don't know, how old are their kids? Seven and nine? Somewhere in that range. They have, they just show up on the sport court play. Across the street, right there on Jeff, you don't see it in that picture, but right across the street, they have three children. They've learned how to ride bikes over there. Their middle kid, Alex, turned from the kid that, you know, would come over and go home crying every time to now he's four years younger than most of the other kids that play back there, and now he's one of the first kids to get picked, and he's a stud. Like, he's, you know, it's transformed. So it's, everybody in the neighborhood has been on the sport court and spent time back there. So fast forward to January of 2020, that's when we started the process of looking at, you know what, we have the typical Edina 1965 house. The basement's seven-foot ceilings, and when, where there's duck work, it drops to six-foot. So people have to duck in the basement. Our master bedroom, our master bath is the size of that desk. You know, you can, the two of us can't be in there at the same time, so you kind of start going, okay, we need to do something a little nicer. So we looked at building up, and that's where this was, I think the first plans I saw were in June of 2020. So when they say we started this application before this variance, we started this in January of 2020. When we got his pricing and what it was going to be worth at the end, it doesn't make sense. We'd have a really nice upstairs and okay main level, and then we'd have, you know, seven-foot ceilings in the basement and six feet otherwise. So then we started looking at, okay, do we buy somewhere else? Do we, you know, we love our neighbors, we love this sport court, we want to stay, so it's okay. If we tear it down and rebuild, now we have a 2022 house that we love the whole thing instead of a 1965 house with a new roof and an addition upstairs. Financially, it made more sense. It was, you know, we could get the house the way that we wanted it. It wasn't until October 5th, we were looking at rental houses. Like, we're starting to get down to, it was the end of 2020 is where we were like, okay, we're doing the tear down, but you can't, because of road restrictions, we really couldn't start until May to start hauling stuff in. So then we started figuring out timing things. We go, okay, we don't want our kids to miss the summer there, so we don't want to start it in May and be gone from our neighbors in the neighborhood for, during the peak times. So we put it off until the fall. So we get through, kids back in school, all that stuff, start lining it up. Lumber prices, everything through the roof, gets delayed a little bit longer, but we commit that we're going to do it. So this past October 5th, we're ready to go. I call my mortgage guy, I said, are we good? I call my builder, I said, are we good? His biggest concern was the impervious coverage. Once he got past that, we already had the side back, the setback variances figured out, we thought, because the front, we matched to the north, we were going to move it two feet to match that setback, and to the south, we were 25 feet still. Like, our original plans, we were going eight feet bigger. I mean, we weren't doing this to make a smaller house, we were going to make it a little bit bigger. So we were going eight feet farther than where it is now originally. So that's when he started talking with the City of Edina, Chris Akers, A-K-E-R-S, I don't know if I'm saying that right, started talking to her, and so October 5th, so that's when I signed the lease, and then two to three days after that is when we got word that there was a problem with the permit, first time we heard anything about it. Assured that worst-case scenario, we'd have to shrink the house five to six feet. So our thought was where we were taking two feet away from the north side, we would just literally shift it down two feet. So we weren't going to take the eight feet to make a bigger house, we were just going to shift it those two feet and maintain the same linear length of the house. So we thought, okay, and had assurances, not, when he was signing, he never once said they promised this would pass, but they were leading us in the direction of this is what you should do to get a variance through, you know, if you keep the same linear length, you should be okay. So we kept going down the path. So that's when I, you know, still closed on the mortgage. November 4th, I closed on the mortgage, and literally days later, then we get that even the two-foot variance, when Chris would, I think, I assume what happens on that end is that Chris would give us some ideas of what to do. She'd go back and talk to her colleagues, and then they would say, we can't support this. She'd come back to us, say, that's not going to work. So then we went all the way back to, okay, we're going to shrink two feet on this side, and then we're just going to stay, we're going to put the house to end right where it is right now, and thinking that would go through. So we proceeded to move out of the house, we're in a rental, and I guess you've kind of got the rest of it from there, but that's how we got to where we are today. I hope that was the three-minute thing, but...
No, you get more than three minutes, so.
Or that doesn't apply to this, because some of the other things that, I mean, on the hearing that you just had, part of it was because it's an odd-shaped lot. If you look, like, part of the setback problem is also that mine isn't a standard. Like, you know, to have two front yards, it's a little ridiculous to me, but we also have, live on a curved street, where that, where that, taking that 25.8 feet, that's where there's a curve in the road. So I don't even have a normal city block in front of me where it's a nice square, so I lose feet there just because it's a, again, like the previous one that you just passed, it's a misshapen lot and for the, where the house is positioned on the lot. So this has nothing to do with the sport court. The only variance is that movement on the, on the variance to that south side. So it's not about keeping this sport court or not keeping this sport court. Obviously, that's the, what we want, but it has nothing to do with the variance request. The variance request is just that, to go build the house back to where it ends right now, in which 16 neighbors have signed off saying, you know, we support, and two of them have even gone on to whatever it is you send out when you do this, and those aren't friends of mine. There's the 70-some-year-olds that live right next to us, that are the house right there to the north of us. They're one of the ones that did. And the other ones live right across the way, and I want to say, they might be watching, so I shouldn't say how old they are, but I'm guessing in their 70s, they're retiring and go to Arizona. Those are the two people that went online on our behalf without any prompting to ask you guys to pass this variance, because, you know, I'm in the car business, I sell cars. It's called making a deal. It's, this is one of those deals that's so easy, because nobody loses. If you pass this variance, Ryan gets to build a house, and his subconscious will get work. All my neighbors get to keep a sport court and see their property values go up because they get a brand-new house. The City of Edina wins, because my property characters go up two and a half percent, or two and a half times for the next rest of eternity, and I get, my family gets the house we want and get to stay with our neighbors. So there is nobody that loses if you approve it, and everybody I just mentioned does lose if you don't approve it. So it seems like one of those, I don't like to call them no brainers, because then it offends people if they think differently, but it's a win-win-win.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Does anyone have any questions for our applicant tonight? No? Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, so with that, I will open it up for comments. Or, I mean, if there are questions, you can change your mind on that, too, but. Commissioner Berube?
Well, I don't, I don't really have any comments, except I'm influenced by the current, or the proposed structure actually improves the setback situation. I do think having two front yards makes this complicated, and the fact that the proposed house doesn't make it any worse, and it really doesn't sound like it's feasible to keep the current structure and kind of build onto it, or building up. I'm sorry?
I went through the public hearing, so we're not going to get to any type of motions, is what they were reminding me of.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, so we're not motioning?
No, we're not motioning it, we're gonna...
How are they going to get an answer?
Well, we're going to open the public hearing, and then we'll motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, you know where I'm going.
You tipped your hair.
I tipped it.
That's quite all right. So we will open the public hearing. No, that, it's my fault, too, I led you there.
It's cruel.
We will now hear from residents who would like to provide public testimony, and so if you're participating remotely, given that we don't have anyone here, please call in now. If we could get the number up on the screen, that would be super helpful. The number is 1-800-374-0221, with conference ID 9037387. An operator will ask you for your name and street address and put you in a queue to speak after you press star one, and we will give it a minute to see who calls in.
It's been pretty close to a minute, and we do not have any callers.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed, and I will pass it back to Commissioner Berube to close any comments that she may have had.
Okay, mid-sentence. Yeah, so I think, I think I said what I needed to say, but, you know, I totally empathize with the situation that they're in. It must be so frustrating, but really, I'm moved more by the facts of the situation. I'm sure they're great neighbors, and everybody wants them to stay, but the facts are, this situation actually improves the current situation, or the previous home, anyway, and I don't see a compelling reason not to approve the proposal to, the setback variance. So that's my thought.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
I usually, I give a lot of importance to the staff report and, and the direction and the information they provide, and even though they did kind of give us options, I can, you know, denial or approval, I mean, is, I don't think they're going to get too out of joint either way. So I mean, I kind of, I mean, I think they've allowed us a good amount of flexibility with their, the report as they prepared and the options to us. So, yeah, I concur pretty much with Commissioner Berube. Thank you.
I think for me, too, it's lucky timing in a way, too, knowing the timing of the recommendations and what the city council's reviewing from an impervious surface perspective, because if we were having this conversation after that had passed, or if the application had been submitted, I think that we would be bound by different facts, right? And so given, given the state of where things are right now, which is what we need to think of this as, I agree with you, Commissioner Berube, of, you know, the north setback is improving, the south setback is not getting any worse, and overall, it sounds like it would be, you know, an improvement to the overall neighborhood. So I, too, do feel supportive of this. Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, I'd like to agree. I think once this provision presumably gets passed by the city council and there's a different ordinance for permeable surface, then I think it's clear that we should look at this with a very different lens than we're looking at this one. Since this got in just under the wire with this, I don't think there's any reason to deny it, so thank you.
All right. Commissioner Olson?
Well, I would just make a motion if, so I would move approval of the variance condition to staff's conditions in the report.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Your variance has passed, best of luck. Thank you. All right, next up, we have our third and final public hearing being presented by Director Teague. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This property is located up in the northwest corner of the city, one of our last subdivisions, Parkwood Knolls subdivisions that was platted around the year 2000 in there. The site is zoned R1, single dwelling unit district. Here's a look at the aerial, and note that the property we're looking at is oversized compared to all the lots surrounding it. It was originally platted in the Parkwood Knolls 26th Edition as two lots. So these are the two lots that we're looking at. When the, the origin, when the home was built, the property owner at that time combined the two lots for tax purposes, so that's why it exists as just one lot today. So the proposal is to restore that original plat and build a second home to the north. The subdivision conforms to all of our lot area, lot width, and depth requirements. So this is somewhat unique for us, that we have a plat that meets all of our code requirements. So the applicant is really entitled this subdivision. So that is the request before the Planning Commission, is a subdivision of this property. When this was originally platted, the site was mass graded as part of the overall development, so it's essentially ready for a building pad. When a home was ready to be built there, they would submit building plans, and they would have a more detailed grading and drainage permit that would be reviewed by engineering at that time. Because the, this is a code-compliant plat, staff is recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report. Our applicant is on the line with us this evening, should you have any questions of Ms. Carol Lansing.
Wonderful. Thank you, Director Teague. Do we have any questions for staff tonight? Okay, I have two questions. So first, does the line in which this proposal is dividing align to the line that was a part of that initial proposal? It's the same property line?
It is a little different.
Okay.
And the reason it's different is to conform to the lot area requirements. When this was, as you recall, it's determined by the median of all properties within 500 feet. So when it was originally subdivided... feet. So when it was originally subdivided, it probably met at that time. But because the area has developed over time, reestablishing would have required some variances. So they just did some minor shifting in order to be code-compliant.
Thank you. And then the last question that I have is, you used the term entitled. Can you remind us, I'm sure you don't have it on cue, but of our pyramid of discretion, and where this falls into that?
Yeah, this, the city has very little discretion, because it is code-compliant.
Okay.
So it would be toward the top of the pyramid.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, I will go ahead and invite Carol Lansing, if you would like to, if you have any presentation. I'm sure that you don't, but welcome you to speak if there's anything that you would like to add.
Hello, Chair. This is Carol Lansing and committee, commission members. No, we are just here for questions and appreciate the work that staff has done with us on this.
Wonderful, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant tonight? Commissioner Berube?
Okay, for at least the second time tonight, can I break the Roberts Rule slightly? And I missed, I should have asked you this, Director Teague. If this is all code-compliant, why is this not just a staff issue?
Because our, our city code requires this process to be followed, whether it's code-compliant or not. We just don't see a lot of code-compliant subdivisions. We've had a few over the years, not too many. It's the same with a site plan review.
Gotcha.
Even if a project comes in that meets all of our setback requirements, we still are, it's still subject to review by planning commission and city council.
Yep. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't follow the procedure. I was just slow tonight.
Also, do your refresher book, so you can... All right, any questions for applicants? All right, then we will move to the public hearing. So we will hear from any residents who would like to provide testimony. If we could get the number up on the screen, that would be greatly appreciated. If you are participating remotely, call in now at 1-800-374-0221, with conference ID 9037387. An operator will ask you for your name and street address, and put you in a queue to speak after you press star one. So I will look to our call-in manager and see if anyone's calling in. But otherwise, we'll give it a full minute before we close that.
No calls at this time.
All right, seeing that there are no further calls, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Now I will move this open for discussion, comments, or if anyone would like to make a motion.
I move that we approve the subdivision at 5300 Kelsey Terrace, as proposed in the staff, as described in the staff memo.
I second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. All right, this subdivision has passed, and it's been approved. So thank you. And thank you, Carol Lansing, for calling in and being available. Best of luck. Next on our agenda is a, is reports and recommendations. So I was totally planning on having my partner in crime for the Cahill District, David Elkhayer, here tonight. He would have been here on the 15th, but we all know what happened. So, as everyone on the planning commission knows, we are undertaking our Cahill Industrial Park District Plan. So we've, we kicked off that initiative on a November 15th meeting, which many of you were in, all of you were in attendance for. And I thought that that was a really great session, and at that time, we also opened up our application to be a part of the working group. We received a ton of interest, like, super, like, really, really exciting, dozens applied. And then David and I kind of whittled down the list to a total of, a total of 12 people. So our green pin that we proposed was for a total of 11 people, which includes David and I. We came to 12 people total, because there's one who I think we would like to make a great student member. So very similar to the way that we do student members, as a part of the planning commission, have a student member as a part of the working group. And just given that we had someone of the younger generation that was excited to be a part of it, thought it was a no-brainer to put her on the list for that. So, tonight, I want to receive approval for these names, for these people to be a part of the working group. So what I'm going to do is just very briefly read through the list of the names of those that we selected, and then ask for a motion to approve that. But before I do that, Commissioner Berube, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I appreciate, so you'll read the names. Can you also just give us a couple sentences or a couple minutes on why you chose those? Versus, I mean, was there some particular reason, like, expertise, or geographical location, or diversity, or what helped you choose those?
Yeah, absolutely. So there were three kind of buckets that we were trying to fill for people. So one was those that were in near the area residentially. We also were trying to find people who had either, were either owners of land or tenants of the businesses that were within the area. And the third was more of like an at-large, that's where we're looking for people with more of the specific expertise. Thankfully, we had a lot of interest from nearby residents. I would say the area in which we didn't have as much, as many applicants was in the business community, though I think that we did, we have some. And so those were, were pretty easy decisions of, yes, we absolutely want these voices at the table. And then, you know, other things that we thought about were just diversity and makeup of the group as a whole.
Thank you.
So with that, I will read through the names that we have. And I do, I haven't met any of these people in person that I recall, so I apologize for any, any misses on any names. So we have Ryan Brisak, Louis De Mars, Jamie Glover, Sarah Hugh, Hilda Martinez Salgado, Amir Misahie, Michael Morgan, Michael Schroeder, Anne Snyder, and Steve Trosky are the names, as well as David and myself continuing to chair that.
Perfect. I, that sounds great, and I love the criteria of what you were looking for. I don't know any of those people, but I feel fine and very confident with your selection and your judgment, you and David, and so I would...
Can I add also? Because I've thought of one other thing, too. We were also looking, and I said diversity in general, but one thing that was really important to us, too, is having people involved who haven't historically been engaged in these types of things. You know, there, there was a lot of different people who have been a part of many other working groups and task forces, and some of those definitely made it onto this list. So some of the names were familiar. But it was also really important for us to have new voices at the table, too. So I'm not surprised that many of the names you didn't know. That was very intentional.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. And I know that all of those people will, I'm confident that all of those people will learn a lot, and it'll be, it'll be a really enriching experience. So I would move to make a proposal that we have David and Kate move forward with this. So I make, I make that motion.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think, I mean, as useful as this is, I think it'd be useful for the future, I think, for the city to have, you know, ahead of time, a list of names, and then, you know, just a little, whether it's written by them or written by you guys, just a paragraph of experience, or, you know, what you found most valuable about them, whatever. Because, I mean, some of the names sound familiar, I think, as it, Michael Schroeder was on the, the Southdale Plan, and Hilda Martinez, I believe, was on the Environment Commission, and she was on the Climate Action Plan. So, so I recognize some of the names, but, but it'd be useful to have, you know, like, why you chose them, or a paragraph about them, or maybe both, or whatever. But, I mean, it's fine this time, but I think going forward, the city should look into something like that. Thanks.
So I'll second. I'm jumping ahead of you, Chair. Is that okay? I know you were ready to do it, but I second your motion.
All right, thank you. So all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the names are approved and passed by the planning commission. All right, so thank you. That was all, I believe, that we had as a part of reports and recommendations tonight. So now we will move on to chair and member comments, if we have any. All right, it is holiday time, so that does not surprise me. I will move on to staff comments.
I'll be brief. Just want to start out thanking the commissioners for going out of their way to attend this evening. This was very much appreciated by staff and our applicants especially, so they can move forward with their projects. The only update I had was mentioned from the last council meeting, was the ordinance. The city council held the public hearing, asked some questions about the impervious surface ordinance, and they will take action at their meeting next week. That is it for staff. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Next is adjournment, if I could have a motion for that.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.